School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance is denied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay. First on the agenda, we have public comment. And we have a public comment in person and also via email, so I'll start with Rachel Riley.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Ed this evening. As a community, we have spent a great deal of time, energy, and money bringing the Positivity Project to our students this school year. In a society that has become increasingly divisive and polarized, the importance of guiding our children down the paths of kindness, justice, and acceptance is vital to their futures and to the future of the world that they will someday lead. The P2 introductory letter that was shared with families last October points to 24 character strengths which serve as its foundation. Many of our teachers have been working hard to encourage and model these character strengths in their daily classroom interactions with our children. The following character strengths are part of the P2 lesson plan that is being taught to our youth: perspective, social intelligence, kindness, fairness, open-mindedness, and self-control. Each of these values are incredibly beneficial to our community, both in and out of the school buildings. I find it very troubling, therefore, that the president of our Board of Ed has utilized a social media platform to belittle and name-call those in our community who may not share her personal views. In a recent post, she shared information regarding the VA system and its initiatives relating to gender pronouns. Added to the VA information was the following: "We've had some local people angry that the school has informed kids about pronouns." And there, and in their view, that's indoctrination. Calling members of the community bigots because they may not share the same views is unkind, unfair, and closed-minded. Each member of the Board of Ed, once elected, agreed to represent the entire Gilderland community. Our community will not always agree on every issue, and as we have seen in the recent past, not every member of our community will express their thoughts in a positive, productive, or appropriate manner. Nevertheless, our Board of Ed members have a responsibility to set a proper example for our children. We have chosen to invest the money and time necessary to address the social-emotional health of our student body. Teachers are using their limited classroom time to share these valuable messages with our children, and parents receive weekly emails encouraging them to continue the P2 discussions at home. I would, therefore, ask our elected representatives to look at their own behaviors and, if necessary, make adjustments so that they exemplify the standards that we expect of our students and our staff. If one cannot lead by example, one should not lead at all. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll respond to that before we move on to the next public comment. Yes, I affirm the right to you, for students to use pronouns, and I affirm the right for kids who are asking for that respect. So we'll move on to the next public comment. Do I have any other public comments in person? Linda? No? Okay. The next public comment is from Nadie Heralcek. She writes, "Dear members of the Gilderland Board of Education, my name is Nadie Heralcek, and this year during the 21-22 sports season, I was on the Gilderland Junior Varsity Wrestling Team. I'm writing this letter to you to request the addition of a girls' wrestling team for Gilderland High School. Although I've had an amazing experience with wrestling, it's a sport that isn't accessible to many girls. Girls may assume that they're not allowed to wrestle because it's listed as a boys' sport, or they may encounter adults who discourage them from continuing. The latter of which happened to me on multiple occasions. The Gilderland coaches have always been very supportive of me. Coach Favreau was the one who originally welcomed me into the program when I did youth wrestling, and he has helped me with various techniques this year. Coach Bow was my coach on JV wrestling and helped me do my best all season. Coach Barge is my coach on the modified team, and he was always very supportive of me. Coach Hustlander is the one who encouraged me to write this letter in the first place. In January, he took me and the other girl on the team to an all-girls tournament that was held at Kusaki Athens. This tournament was crucial to our success, and it was a major confidence booster. That tournament was where I had my first win of the season with a pin in the third period. All of my four matches that day, I was consistently doing better, much better than I had been doing the rest of the season. Although Aniella, the other girl on the team, had some wins under her belt before that tournament, she won three out of the four matches she wrestled. When on a level playing field, we performed extremely well. Recently, I took part in the first-ever girls' folk-style state championships in New York State and had an amazing experience. Gilderland girls are among the first in the state to compete in these events, and the next step is getting us our own team. Wrestling has been so important to me, and I want other girls to be able to benefit from it as well. Wrestling has helped me meet some really cool people and has helped me get in better shape, too. Unfortunately, when girls have to wrestle boys, it's often not a very positive experience. I was very lucky this year to be able to wrestle another girl for the majority of the time at practice, but most girls don't have that same opportunity. I feel much more confident when I'm wrestling a girl. Although I know that girls will always have a place to wrestle in Gilderland, it's time for us to take the lead in this fastest-growing sport in the country and support our girls just as much as we support the boys. Thank you for your consideration, Nadie Heralcek." I guess just to follow up on that, I know that there's a couple of districts, I know Niskiuna has a girls' wrestling team, and I would like maybe Dave Austin to see how much interest there is so we can consider it, because I don't, I don't follow wrestling, boys or girls.
Yeah, I think, you know, it could just be kind of like a unified team, like we do with the Storm, where we got a couple of schools that might have the same situation we have, where it's two or three or less girls, and I-
It's one way to start, it's one way of starting out.
One way to start out, yeah.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, the unified team, that's, that's a great experience. The Storm's a great experience, a good place, I mean, that's, that's the way we would have to look.
Uh-huh.
So I guess we just ask Dave.
Okay, so you can follow up then with Dave Austin?
I will, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the consent items. This includes the minutes of the March 29th meeting and April 5th, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials. Can I have a motion to approve consent items? Nate, Second Blanca, any questions or comments? Yep? All, all in favor? Pass is nine zero. Thank you. Next, we have information items, Superintendent Information, Dr. Wiles.
Okay, thank you. First, each year, the New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Capital Zones selects members of the senior class and adapted physical education students who may be moving on from high school with a Leadership Award in Physical Education. This award recognizes students in the areas of leadership, scholastic achievement, physical performance, and service to the school and/or community. So tonight, we'd like to congratulate four students: Joanna Chen, Mitchell McKissick, Samantha Morrissey, and Benjamin Palashi. More congratulations, we have some Gilderland High School students who entered the multimedia contest of the Albany-Tula Alliance. The topic for this year was discerning fact from fiction. The prompt students were given was, "How can you form an unbiased opinion of another culture without being able to travel there?" This contest was for all Capital Region High School students, including college freshmen, working individually or in small groups. Thirteen students in Ms. Guerin's 10th grade English class finished strong, winning recognition and cash prizes. Below is the list of winners. Second place was Medina Arova, who is a group leader, working with Samantha Cigar. Third place went to Hazel Regan. Honorable mention went to Ashi Gedamseti, who's a group leader, along with Sharon Francis and Suriana Nalamothu. Also, Marian Abdellnor, Miranda Petordi, Connor Webb, who's a group leader, Ava Vitale, Jade Sun, Owen Cook, Erica Laverneus. So congratulations to all of our students who entered that very interesting topic. I would like to read some of those projects. We also had some students who were recognized in the Capital Region Media Arts Festival, so we want to offer our congratulations to those students whose work was selected for the Capital Region Media Arts Festival, and in particular, two of our seniors, Camilla Armstrong, who earned second place for Emoji Self-Portrait, and Brian Govan for his film Frivolous Theft, which earned an overall outstanding film award. Other award winners were Sevila Bianco for Rude Awakening, Harper Wolf for The House, Sarah Shoemaker for Shiny Things, Emily Salisbury for Pretty Girl, Isabella Libby for Collection of Problems, Sidney Moffett for Low Poly Self-Portrait, Carter St. Dennis for Glitched Salvatore Mundi, Tamjid Manan for Mirror Road, Catherine Krizik for Women of the Spirits, Elia Famedu for Quantum Superposition, Camilla Armstrong for Self-Portrait, and Justin Garcia also for a self-portrait, Alina Khan also for a self-portrait, Jaden Smith also for a self-portrait, Animation Class and 912 for Morphs and Walk Cycles, and that included Ian Benedict, Liam Durkin, Cole Kozinski, and Ashlyn Lather for Follow My Social, Summer Lawfridge, Kylie Ocasio, Colin Shea, Savannah Plant for The Stairwell, and again, Brian Govan for the Frivolous Theft, and Camilla Armstrong for Emoji Self-Portrait. So congratulations, everyone. And I just wanted to add as well, in the spirit of art, today was the first elementary art show in three years at the Gilderland Public Library, and what I am overwhelmed by is the amount of talent we have among our school community as artists, and the passion and the inspiration of their teachers. I think we had the most people in Gilderland Public Library at one time in three years. So I'm not sure if I'm going to get a talking to when I get home tonight, or what, but the parking lot is twice as big, and it was still impossible to find a place to park.
Yep, it was.
So to all of our artists and the teachers who inspire them, thank you and congratulations. A tougher topic, however, moving right along, is just a brief update on our school start time work. We have the task force that has been pulled back together again, we've been meeting on Thursdays. Our most recent meeting was last Thursday, and we spent our hour and a half together looking at three models for start times for the fall, and the distinguishing feature of the three models is that, at least from a transportation perspective, they would be doable. So we decided to focus in on what we can actually accomplish, given our geography and our traffic and the number of drivers that we have. And then each of those models, we talked about the pros and the cons, and all of the models had pros and all of the models had cons. The third model had the, the first model had the high school, elementary school starting first, which is, it was a variation on what we're doing right now. The second model had the high school going first, so it reverted back to an earlier start time. The third model, which we rejected by the end of the meeting, had the elementary schools starting last. Their start time, I'm not even going to say what time it was, it was very late. So at the conclusion of the meeting, we had a suggestion to mock up a model where the middle school went last, and also to explore a variation on the elementary-first model where the elementary started just a little bit earlier. Because one of the significant trade-offs of the models is lost instructional time, and depending on who goes in the middle, whoever's in the middle needs to look at shortening their instructional day. We don't meet again on the Thursday of this week for obvious reasons, and even more obvious, we're not meeting next Thursday, but we are meeting the Monday after break, and the hope is to bring some concrete recommendation or recommendations to the Board of Education. And we'll do a presentation in early May to the board to see, so the whole board can see kind of what we're working on. But the work continues. I know Rebecca and Barbara sit on those meetings, and I don't know if I missed anything, or if you want to add anything?
I'll just add, there really is no perfect solution. There's many, many people looking at this, and there doesn't seem to be any, you know, miracle. It's gonna be all pros and no cons.
Winning the lottery and buying buses would be a miracle.
We'd have to win the lottery and clone bus drivers, yes. We have, the number of buses, we're good.
Okay, just need drivers.
No one to drive them.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
It does make me a little nervous, cutting down on any instructional time. I know there's not a good choice, but it, that just kind of makes me nervous, they're really cut close as it is, so.
I think everyone shares that feeling, yeah, for sure.
All right. Just a little follow-up. One of the things that is a bit of a problem is the, the whole Capital Region isn't on the same start time. And one of the things that I think I brought up was that a number of states, as a state policy, California being one, I guess New Jersey's potentially going in that direction, is mandating that, you know, schools, high schools don't start any earlier than 8:30. And that would alleviate some of the busing challenges that we have with getting kids to BOCs and, you know, other, other districts. And one of the things that we did many, many years ago, this goes way back, as a board, we had the state, School Boards Association, put up a policy proposal on their floor suggesting that they lobby the state. But at that time, we made it as mild as we could, in the sense that it wouldn't be a mandate, but there'd be some kind of an encouraging, you know, a blue ribbon school or an orange school or whatever designation. But in light that a number of states are actually trying to make this a law, would we, as a board, want to make a similar proposal to NISBA? Or suggest that there is a bill that I haven't seen yet that's in our legislature right now that is also recommending, you know, a late school start, mainly because the scientific evidence is so strong that this is so beneficial to kids? And I just throw that out, that we certainly have the opportunity to do that if we wanted to.
Okay, yeah. That would make me, at the 8:30 time when you said that, makes me a little skittish, only because we're supposed to be making our students, like, ready for after they graduate, and we have some students that are going to go on to college who will have an 8:00 a.m. class, and, like, we need to get them ready. And I, just speaking from me, as a parent of two high school students right now, they're not saving any sleep, they're going to bed later. And it's still, like, I, I would not be in favor at all of start, of doing that, not at all.
And also, when you look at the survey results, you got back a number of teachers, especially middle school teachers, and having been there, I know what they mean, you know, it's so late in the day, you've lost the kids. I mean, the last hour and a half, you're just, all your energy is just to get their attention, and they're, they're done. So I'm not thrilled about what, you know, I, I know what the scientific research shows about high school kids, but I'm thinking of those kids in the middle, too, who often get squeezed in, squeezed out.
With sports and extracurriculars, it just, it pushes, it's a lot.
Pushes everything later and later.
So I think about this a lot, I'm sure that comes as a surprise. But, you know, our students are with us for 13 years, and as a, the student journey will include going first, second, and third in the, in the lineup. So when I think about it that way, it's like, as a student, I never get the earliest spot for all 13 years, or the middle spot, or the late spot for all 13 years. And when I thought about it that way, it, it starts to help me think about, so what makes the most sense on that journey? And I don't have the answer to it yet, but I just think that that's an important twist on the conversation, that it's not forever for any grade level.
But we need to also honor the, the research for all levels, that, what it shows in terms of best learning conditions. And there's been, you know, since the 70s, a lot of attention given on how middle school kids learn and what's the best kind of learning environment. So I think we need to emphasize all three.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, I, I know you do.
But we also have the research from Minnesota that piloted this many, many years ago, California that has been in effect, and, I mean, their college students are still going to college and, you know, that type of thing. But overwhelmingly, I, I think Glenn's Falls, you know, preceded us trying to do this this year. And again, originally, the kids were a little bit leery about it, but when they were questioned after they had actually experienced it, they were overwhelmingly positive for it. You know, we could even have another follow-up from the gentleman from up there that made the presentation to us a number of years ago.
The huge difference is that they don't transport their kids. That's our-
Right, right. Plus, if you're only focusing on the survey or looking at the results for that one level, but you have to look at what is it doing across the district? How is everyone affected? Yes, I agree. Sure, high school kids, it's better for them, but what is it doing? Where's, where do we find the balance for each level? That's what we have to think about.
Well, one of the things that was, was brought up by Mike Blaster is that the middle school does have more teaching minutes than are required. And so if, if we had to shrink some time, that would probably be an easier fix than the elementary or the high school level. But again, it, it's a tough problem, and they're working on it, and we'll see what happens.
I think it underscores that there's no good, there's no easy solution.
Yeah.
There's no one's gonna be happy-
There's no easy solution.
Like, with everything.
Well, I have my last item, which I'm pretty sure everyone will be happy with. And this is about school recess on May 27th, 2022. And if the district does not experience any more than one emergency closing situation prior to Memorial Weekend, all Gilderland Central School districts will be closed on Friday, May 27th, due to unused snow emergency days allocated as part of the 2021-2022 school year calendar. This was listed on the calendar as a contingent holiday, and all district and school offices will be closed on that day. That means we could, we can have one more day.
No, we don't want more.
For whatever purpose, but hopefully, we will not need that, and we can all enjoy an extra-long weekend. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have Board President Information. We have four items here. First is voter registration. I'll read this, so the information is clear. The public vote on the school budget and Board of Elec, Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Voter registration is required at the Gil, in the Gilderland School District. To vote, you must be 18 years old, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the Gilderland School District for at least 30 days prior to the vote. If you are not registered with the School District or the Albany County Board of Elections, you must do so prior to the vote. You may register with Albany County Board of Elections, and there's a link on the agenda, or through the DMV, and there's also a link on the agenda. The district has established three registration dates for residents to vote at the May 17th Budget Vote and Election. You may register anytime between 8:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. at one of the elementary schools, or from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the district office on the following dates: Thursday, May 5th, Monday, May 9th, or Tuesday, May 10th. If you are not sure which elementary school to vote, please refer to our webpage link, Budget and Taxes, and use the link that drops down, Voter Eligibility and Absentee Valleys. You can see if you're registered and where you vote for school elections. The next item has to do with the upcoming Board of Education election. Petitions are available through the district clerk for any district resident who may be considering running for the Board of Education. Petitions are required for eligible district voters are required based on the 2% of those voting in last year's election. There are three three-year terms and one one-year term on the board that will begin July 1st, 2022. In order to be eligible to run for the Board of Ed, nominating petitions with 52 or more signatures from qualified voters in the district must be submitted to the district clerk on or before April 18th by 5:00 p.m. Anyone who has questions about the duties and responsibilities of a board member may contact the superintendent, board president, or any current member of the Board of Ed. A candidate must be able to read and write, be at least 18 years of age, a qualified voter, and a district resident for at least one year prior to the vote, the date of the vote on Tuesday, May 17th. Further qualifications and information is in the packet available through the district clerk. The next item is the Capital Region BOCs Budget and Board Election Vote that will take place on Wednesday, April 27th. There are four seats up for election. This is the date of our special board meeting that takes place at 8:00 a.m. So I think we'll do that again virtually, can we vote virtually for that?
Yes.
At 8:00 a.m., so we have that on your calendar. And lastly, the DEI Committee Call for New Members. The Board of Ed is seeking letters of interest from school, community stakeholders, students, faculty, staff, parents, community members, to be considered for membership on the newly established DEI committee. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Action Items School Business. Neil?
Just one item, please. It's a recommendation to approve a general fund transfer of $24,250.
Can I have a motion to approve the transfer? Rebecca, Second Kelly, any questions or comments? All in favor? Pass is nine zero. Thank you, Neil. Next, Superintendent Action, Dr. Wiles.
My first item is an agreement that reads, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools, Marie Wiles, to execute the proposed agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and Naomi Chris."
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement? Nate, Second Gloria, any questions or comments? All in favor? Pass is nine zero.
Okay, my next item is the adoption of the 2022-2023 school budget. As you know, earlier this week, the state was able to finalize the state budget, and we were able to get some updated aid runs that we were able to incorporate into our plan that we discussed last, last Tuesday when we were together for our workshop. Mr. Sanders has put together a worksheet for the board to contemplate the changes that we've seen since the adoption of the state budget, so I'm going to turn things over to you, Mr. Sanders.
Dr. Wiles? We do have revisions, even though it was a week ago. This relates to information that we file with the state regarding expenditures, planned expenditures. So as you know, we have a capital construction project going on. One of the things that we do have associated with, with that is going to be debt, and then with debt, we get aid back from the state as part of that process. We have to supply information to the state on when we anticipate having those expenses and, in turn, the state aiding those expenses. So there's certain timeframes where we have to indicate we're about to have a borrowing, that borrowing is going to occur in a certain fiscal year, and then the state has the information to make the adjustment on their end in terms of the payment of state aid. So we made a late decision prior to the superintendent's budget release of whether we could get our projects finished in time and the paperwork in on time to get aided this school year. As you know, with supply chain issues and material delivery issues, our project has dragged out farther than, longer than we thought for the first phase of our construction for the 2019 proposition. We were concerned that we would not be able to complete everything that we needed to do to make that commitment to the state that we're ready to, to receive aid, to have everything in place. So if, if that weren't the case, we would have had expenditures without aid. So we took the safer route and said, we'll, we'll put it off a year, that means delaying the submission of information to the state, and they will take it off the record. So in the January run, the executive budget run, that aid was not shown anticipating the finalization of the projects from, from 2019, or what's shown, excuse me. And the state had planned on, on providing that money. Now we have a change of plans on the new state aid run, they've taken that money away, as they should, because they're- On the new state aid run, they've taken that money away, as they should, because they're not going to spend it, so our aid got reduced. We should have caught that and made that adjustment and notified you sooner than, so for that I apologize. What this means, though, is that we do have to make some adjustments to the budget from what was presented last week. So I'll just walk through those. Basically, in terms of state aid, it's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we are now need to cover that we had anticipated in, in revenue that we're not going to receive for next year. We have some offsets to that on the expenditure side to be able to get the balance, the budget back in balance. So looking at some of the needs that we have in the, identified in the budget, we have custodial equipment, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars that we can utilize federal funds for. These are vacuums, floor scrubbing machines, the health and safety type of items that we replace on a regular basis. Elementary furniture and equipment, so we allocate money each year to replace cafeteria tables, student chairs, desks, those sorts of things. So that's all five elementary schools. We can put that against federal funds. Also, replacement music equipment, so we're planning to, to do that. We're doing some of that already. So we will shift that money over to the federal funds. Also, since April first has passed, we now know who is requesting transportation for the next school year. So all the transportation requests had to be filed. So looking at that, we had six schools that we were transporting to, six runs that we had contracted for to, to private schools in the current year that we're not going to be transporting to next year. We do have three other schools that we are, that we currently don't do, or two other schools that are going to require transportation we don't, currently don't transport to. The net effect of that is a reduction of just about, just shy of sixty thousand dollars for that change. And then, and, and again, we'll be able to realize some savings there. And then special ed private placements, we've talked about this quite a bit. We had quite a few, an enrollment increase in our special education program, larger than normal. As time has gone on, we've been able to look at those students closer and, closer and decide on placements. We had projected three students to be in private placements. Lisa Mills has told me we can bring them in-house to our existing programs at no additional cost. So that saves us a hundred, or another hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So in short, we have budget adjustments. We're almost back to the same spot as where we were before in terms of our tax levy increase being still at two point nine eight percent. Our budget is, is lower. It's four point six eight percent, the budget to budget increase. But those changes really kind of bring us back in line. The other thing I should mention is that we would have ended up in this same spot. If we had done this two weeks ago, we still have the same situation where the aid reduction occurred and we would have had to make adjustments in the budget. So again, it's not that we're, we wouldn't have not landed in the same situation. But again, I apologize for being at this point in, in the process and, and bringing this to your attention. And I did notice one other change in the resolution. We need to change the amount of the budget to one hundred nine million, eight eight seven eight four five. So when that gets voted on, we need to, to make that adjustment. It's at the higher number. Is there any questions?
I just have a question also. The state aid was reduced by that three oh eight ninety-one.
Yes.
And everything under that line where it says custodial equipment? So all of that is basically balancing out and brings us back to neutral from the last worksheet?
Yes, that's correct.
Would the, I mean, I'm just curious. Everything under there, would we find this money for other things if this hadn't happened?
Well, we would have still been in the same place. I mean, we, we still would have not had that aid coming in. Or we got, it's, it's a timing issue.
Okay.
So we, if, I would have told you at the last meeting
Right.
that we had the situation without the aid as, as well, so. And then the plan for how to address that, so.
Thank you.
So we're a little bit less than what we had said last time?
On the tax levy increase, we're exactly the same. We're a little bit less budget to budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, Kim?
Yeah, I'm definitely glad that we were able to make that up. That, that's great. But just kind of maybe bouncing a little off of what Seema said. I, I'm a little concerned because we've asked for certain things and we're told that there's no wiggle room. And now all of a sudden, we're able to find that. So I, I, and I understand they're the federal funds, but we've also been told over and over that it's still tight. So I, I would not feel comfortable if I didn't say something because I understand it was, it was an oversight. We weren't told. But I mean, we're supposed to make, we have a fiduciary responsibility as Board members. So I'm just a little getting this today and looking at everything and seeing that here's money. But we sat through two budget workshops where we were consistently told there was no wiggle room. I'm just concerned.
Certainly understand.
But I, I think part of it too, well, we might have found out April first, but that's not that much time like, like the, being able to bring the students back wasn't found out. And there was another, oh, the transportation to the private schools couldn't come until April first. So that April fifth, which was, I think, our last meeting, we might have had some knowledge of that, but those were things that we weren't expecting, you know, so.
Oh, no, I, I definitely understand that. But yet, at the same time, we weren't expecting, and there are things that we expect that our, our principals have asked for, that we're told there's no wiggle room. But yet, we thankfully found the money for this. So I guess that's my concern. It's like, it's not looking good. Like last meeting, we found money for the librarian. This week, we found the three, over three hundred thousand to cover. It's starting to look like a pattern, so I'm just like, and I know this sounds awful. It's just I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, I, I disagree. I can, I can see why it's coming like that.
So you're saying you're taking it from the federal budget, so?
Federal funds, yes.
So it just means that we won't have that money at the end of the, and so we're just pre, we're getting the federal, taking more out of the federal funds than we anticipated this year.
Well, we have, we've identified certain expenses out of the federal funds. We still have remaining federal funds. They extend for another two years. We explained that at the last meeting, how there's still a rollout here, so.
That just means you won't be able to use those three hundred thousand dollars in years two, three, and four?
It's, it's less than that. It's just, it's those top three items, so it's close to a hundred thousand.
We're just, if I understand it right, we're just using it up a little bit earlier than we would normally of? Does that make sense?
No. And, and I, I do understand that, but we've, I've brought it up numerous times. We have six bubbles right now at our elementary school. These are our students that started COVID that are losing, that they have lost instruction time. They are struggling. And that should have gone, like, we should have used federal funds even for that to make sure that they're not scraping and trying to, to find this. And I know that we're within the parameters of the class sizes, but our, our thought exchange shows that our families are looking for smaller class sizes. We have federal funds that are supposed to go towards COVID-related things. It's COVID-related that these kids missed out. That they, they were, they were virtual for almost two years. So I guess that's, I understand that it's not necessarily found money, but I guess I'm just, I'm glad we can cover it because then it's not a hit. But at the same time, I don't like how it's being chosen like this over that. Like, these are, of course, we need the equipment and things like that, but we also have students who were literally virtual in kindergarten, in first grade, and then didn't have a full second grade year. And we have other students that, I mean, that's my concern, I guess, with this.
Seema?
Well, Barbara. I guess I have another concern that we aren't fulfilling our obligation, or at least the information that, that Kim provided to us over the last day or so with our FTEs for our special ed population, that apparently we have identified currently certain FTEs that are required, required under, you know, the IEPs to service the kids. And each summer, we seem to inherit a number of families that perhaps might have certain needs. And I was just hoping that we could use some of those federal funds, or maybe we are, to fulfill those FTEs that we already know are mandated by IEPs for the upcoming year. And I'm just worried that by not budgeting for that, where is that money going to come? Or are those kids gonna be short-changed? I know we can't short-change them by law. So maybe you can explain the balance there, why, why all those FTEs are not covered in our budget?
Are you referring to E N L, Barbara?
Not the E N L, the, the spreadsheet that, that Kim shared with us, from the different schools. They had certain needs for their special ed population.
No, this, the, if you're talking about the email that I sent the other day, like, with the FTEs, that was for the E N L.
That was just the E N L.
Yeah, that was just for the E N L.
And that one's covered by federal funds.
So just to clarify, we had a request for one point eight FTEs in E N L. All of those are covered in the, will be covered through federal, the federal funds. And one of the reasons why that makes sense is that during the COVID period, we've had fewer students who either took the NICE SLAT, which is the test that you test out of, or move along the continuum in E N L. So we think we have a backlog of students who will test out over time. So we can use for, you know, the two years, our federal funds to provide those additional FTEs in order to make those, in, in order to serve those students. So the, the other question that came up was, is that one point eight across, I think it's Linwood, Pine Bush, the high school, and Altima, is that enough? We're continuing to evaluate our students right now. If in fact, it turns out we need to add a portion of an FTE, we, we do have the federal resources to do it. But so much of the work that we do here is that with every week that passes, we have better and better data about actual needs, actual costs, so we can fine-tune as we go along. But the other thing I wanted to mention, and Barbara, this is in response to a question you asked last week when we were doing an update on the federal funds, and I think this will be helpful for our community. What we're working on putting together is a kind of a master chart of our federal funds, what we've spent this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, which of those things will carry forward to twenty-two, twenty-three, and which won't? And then what's new for twenty-two, twenty-three? And what will carry forward into twenty-three, twenty-four when that funding runs out? So we're working on that, and we're hoping to be able to present that to you and not too far down the road. But it's a project to sort that out, and I'm, yes, it's a project.
I think that would be helpful, to see that where the sun sets, where the money sunsets.
The other question I wanted to ask, the musical instruments, that will still be funded, right? But it'll be funded with the federal funds rather than our internal monies?
An allocation in the federal funds for that already. We, we cut that a few years ago. Reduced that by about ten thousand dollars in the budget. So this gets us back on track to start working our way back up to a regular replacement music, equipment replacement program.
Gloria?
Just a general question. So is this a type of situation where if we don't, we have to return anything we don't use, right, for the federal funds? Correct?
Yes.
Right. So I, I guess I'm just getting nervous, like, we're not using it. So we're not gonna let that happen, right, where we lose federal funds?
No, we're not.
Okay, don't worry. Okay. Just confirming.
Any questions?
Okay.
Right, so, would you like a motion, I, to consult on this?
Any questions?
Right, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to, um, to pass the budget for the way that it's posted right now. And then we can have discussion after the second motion. So can I have a motion to accept the budget? Gloria, Second Judy? Any questions or comments or amendments?
Do we make that amendment now?
Yep.
All right, so can we amend the, the number in the adoption to match the number that's in Neil's worksheet? Of one hundred and nine million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars?
Second. Okay, all in favor? It passes nine-zero. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so do, do you need a roll call vote? Or is it a write-off vote? Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Passes nine-zero. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
So there's one more step to this. After adopting the budget for one hundred and nine million, now that the Board will need to adopt our property tax report card for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the resolution has resolved that the Board of Education approved the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three property tax report card for submission to New York State Education Department based on the adopted budget.
Can I have a motion to accept the tax report card? Judy, Second Kelly? Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right. It passes nine-zero. And thank you, Dr. Wiley. Next, we have Board Committee Reports. We'll start with Audit.
So when we go back to?
Oh, yes, nope. May fourth is our next meeting. We haven't had one since our last meeting.
Thank you, Kelly. Business practices?
We haven't had a meeting and don't have one scheduled.
Okay. And communications?
We met. We met on April sixth. We had a couple of items on our agenda. The first was the budget communicate, the communication on the budget. We discussed strategies for communicating about the budget to the, to the public at large for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. As in recent years, we will be producing an oversized postcard to share information about the budget rather than that multi-page newsletter which we did years ago. The card will direct readers to the website for more detailed information about any piece of the budget if they wish to dig a little deeper. We discussed some ideas from the committee that we might want to include as we, as we approach communicating with the, with the public. We, we advised to maybe have two or three main points that we stress about the budget as a primary focus. Maybe things like the fact that this budget does maintain programming that we have developed over the course of years, that it also improves our class size reduction, especially at the middle school, grade eight, that it expands the library position at Altman Elementary School, and that it has, shows many, many connections to our mission and our goal. So we advise that the postcard we send out kind of keeps to those ideas. We referenced federal funds, and that's where we came up with the idea of maybe, and Marie suggested about doing the chart to give people a very clear picture. You know, you hear this term federal funds and it's kind of amorphous out there. So we thought we'd make it more concrete and real. And Marie suggested putting together this chart, which will be very helpful, I think. The more, there will be a more extensive newsletter coming out very soon in our, in our mailboxes. It will include many stories about the district, including the arts, athletics, positivity project, and community service. So it'll give people a full picture of what, what the district has been involved in and our kids have been doing. There'll be many photos of student engagements. The committee also looked at the handbook, Section Three. And we hope to have one more meeting on the handbook, and then we'll come back to the Board with all the proposed changes. There, there are not many, but just some suggestions for wording. We reviewed this time, Section Three, and we had some suggested changes referencing some of the wording. There's a section on orienting new members, and we just suggested that we take a look closely at what the district office outline is that they use for new Board members when they kind of orient them to coming onto the Board, to make sure that that, their list agrees with the handbook list. And the last thing we talked about was the self-evaluation. It's been a couple of years since we, as a Board, have done a full evaluation of ourselves and how we're doing. Couple of years ago, we, we brought in a private consultant. And several years ago, Jay Warona, who is the NISBA lawyer, and he also lives in the district, has been very supportive of our district. He helped us do an evaluation one year as well. That was twenty-twenty. Each, each person we brought in had a self-evaluation tool that they had us fill out. And then we all came together and reviewed the results to see how we were doing. So we discussed whether or not the Board needs to do that. It's been a few years now. So one thing we decided, since we were kind of split, there was a couple of different kind of opinions, we decided to come to the full Board for a discussion about how we felt about that. we decided to come to the full board for a discussion about how we felt about that. My feeling was that, I know time is always a big issue about when you do things, but we are going to be scheduling a goal-setting evening. That maybe we could use part of that if we, if we identify a tool early, get that out. People report it, we bring it back. And then we use part of that meeting, divide it maybe into two parts, goal-setting, and then taking a look at how we've done based on a tool that perhaps we can agree on beforehand. Or we punt and push it off another year, which we've been putting off. So I'm open for suggestions or comments or thoughts, reflections?
Well, I mean, time-wise, I think it would make sense to put them together. But I don't know if you're trying to avoid the word retreat, but I'm just wondering if, if they're put together, can it be that, you know, there's only that one situation where the board can be outside of an open meeting? And that would be for the goals, I mean, we've done this before where it's an evaluation slash retreat. Would that, could that be included in that?
I think so.
Well, the goal-setting would be public, but the review of the evaluation does not need to be public. So it could be likely.
Two parts. To the meeting rather than having two separate days. If people feel, you know, do we feel like we want to reflect on how we've been doing? And, go ahead, Rebecca.
So Gloria knows what I'm going to say. I'm open to that. I think that's actually a really good idea to do it with the goal-setting. I just think it's a lot of self-reflection. So we do self-reflection after every meeting. And then we're going to do this other self-reflection. It just seems a little bit insular. And so maybe we could limit some of the self-reflection.
Well, I think, well, I think the tool that we use is going to be important because I think the one we do after the meeting is very specific. How do we do tonight? You know, and if we see anything coming up, we get a heads up early and we can address it. But something like this is more, the questions, I think, would be broader to get at, you know, a broad look at how we've done, maybe about feeling of our goals, how we've met, met those goals or not, and how we've worked as a team. You know, not just specific to a night, but.
I think that, personally, in my opinion, that makes a lot of sense. I think we should maybe think about shelving the every board meeting self-reflection.
Oh, well, we could talk about that at the, at the evaluation. That could be one of the things we reflect on. On our reflections. You know, and Rebecca and I have had this conversation about, you know, my personal feeling is that I think, having been on the board a while, we're lucky. We're very fortunate. We haven't had big issues that have come up. But, you know, nine people working together, we're all very different. We can clash in different ways. And I think it's healthy to catch those things early when they can be worked out rather than them building or seething and sitting there, you know. So that's just my take on it too.
I think it totally makes sense. I, you have a lot more experience in this than I do. So I respect your opinion.
But I also don't want to overkill. I respect that. But if we can work it out that anything gets kind of broken up into a public session where we do the envisioning and then a private time where we reflect on ourselves.
I mean, I'm in support of that. I would think that it would be better to do it after. I think we're in agreement after the election.
Yeah.
And vote.
Yes.
Monica, did you have a comment?
I guess I could save it for the reflection period, but. I'll just really quickly, one of the things that, a sort of question is, we have the opportunity to say if something has made us feel uncomfortable or if we disagree, but then nobody owns it. So it's sort of just like hangs out there. So if somebody feels offended enough to write that they disagree that we didn't meet one of our goals during a meeting, and then we don't talk about it, then how can we fix it? And how can we actually improve? So just like want to leave that out there.
Right.
So I think that's definitely a good topic for that meeting, so.
And would, would it, would the board feel that you'd lead it to a communications committee to identify a tool that we might use? Do we need a third party to come in and do that? Or can we?
It's not going to cost anything, right? When you brought in a third party, has that ever cost, does it, does it cost?
No.
Yes, it does.
Well, one person.
Anybody works for free, but.
I think school boards had a charge.
Oh, they did?
I think so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think we can do it.
We have, there are enough tools out there, I think, that we can identify something.
I mean, we're not doing a full board retreat, so I think that that would be fun.
I don't think we need to bring in an additional person to reflect on reflecting on ourselves. But I do wish that we do, if somebody does say they don't agree with one of those things, they should identify themselves, because we never talk about it. If you look at the past.
Well, we haven't had any really.
No, if you look at the past three or four weeks, there's been somebody that says something. And we're all kind of like, oh, they, somebody thought something, but we never actually talked about it.
Where'd that come from, yeah.
I send an email, send a, bring it up in executive, whatever you feel like you need to do.
Well, I think I followed up and I asked, um, do you know I sent an email last night?
Maybe I haven't been too brief.
Yes, you did, you did. Great.
But yeah, this sounds like a great topic for that.
Mm-hmm.
So we can talk, figure out some dates after then?
Sure. Yeah, and we will be meeting again on May 31st.
Thank you. DEI?
We haven't had a meeting, so our next meeting is April 27th.
Thank you. And then, last of policy.
We have a meeting in May, right?
We're meeting on May 4th.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have public comment number two. Linda, are there any more public comments? Thank you. Next, board issues, ideas, and sharing. Gloria?
I just wanted to amplify what Marie said in the beginning about that elementary school, of the elementary art program. Kim, I ran into Kim there as well, so. All I found myself doing was walking around with a smile on my face. These kids were like so, jumping out of their skin, you know, showing their stuff to their grandparents and their parents. And the parents or grandparents are posing them, pointing to their piece. And, and I looked at some and I thought, I could never do that. And it was a kindergartner, a kindergartner. I said, there's no way on earth a kindergartner did these little ceramic things. So I, my hat's off to the art, the art people in this district because it was phenomenal. It's there and it's going to be there for a while. And if you get a chance, if you want to put a smile on your face, go walk through that room.
The other board issues, ideas, and sharing? Go ahead, Monica.
I was part of the FMS PTA meeting, and there was an update on the Moving Up Day. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who donated because we had to actually ask for donations in order to fund the Moving Up Day celebration. And additionally, I know I had brought up the idea of a dance. It seems like the plan for the Moving Up Day actually negates that need for the dance. It sounds like it's going to be, you know, multi-dimensional, this celebration. And it's going to be like a dance and other things involved. So anyway, kudos to those who planned the Moving Up Day celebration.
Any other issues, ideas, and sharing? Okay, then can I have a motion to adjourn? Kelly, Second Rebecca, all in favor? Aye. It passes nine zero. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.